Good evening, this regular meeting of the Mount Horeb Area School District Board of Education will come to order. Roll call, excuse me, it is seven o'clock. Roll call, Danny?
Here.
Diana?
Here.
Here.
Leah?
Here.
Yep. Jeff is absent and I am here. Mr. DeYoung, can you certify that the meeting has been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Thank you, let's join together for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Is there a volunteer to read the mission statement tonight?
This is Jessica, I can read it.
Okay, thank you, Jessica.
The Mount Horeb Area School District in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you, Jessica. Moving on to item 2A, approval of the presented or revised agenda. Are there any revisions to the agenda?
So moved, Kimberly.
Kimberly has moved?
Diana, second.
Diana, thank you. Has seconded a motion to approve the presented agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the agenda is approved. Item 2B, approval of the September 8th, 2020 regular and executive session minutes.
So moved, Kimberly.
Kimberly has moved?
This is Jessica, second.
Jessica has seconded a motion to approve the September 8th minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the September 8th regular and executive session minutes are approved. Item 3A, school news, Mr. DeYoung.
Well, good evening, everyone. As you can see, I'm not Dr. Salerno. Thank you for having me this evening. Dr. Salerno was not able to attend, so I was asked to sit in this place. I have a couple of things to share with you this evening. First, as you all know, the school year started last week. We certainly want to thank everybody in the community, from employees to parents to students, to the Board of Education Administration for getting the school year off to a start. The second thing is, I want to share with the group that the high school is getting ready to have a virtual fair for their various activities and clubs that they have there at the high school. And so, a special shout out and thank you to Kelly Richardson and also Colleen Nessine for their efforts and their leadership in creating this opportunity for students. Two more items here. The administrative team is going to hold a listening session next week, Wednesday, September 16th at 5:00 PM. The purpose of the session will be to have an opportunity for administrators to not only listen to things that went well thus far in our virtual classroom platform, but also hear comments and concerns to assist us in problem solving. And so, the session is called the Start the School Community Feedback Session. And again, it's Wednesday, September 16th at 5:00 PM. It'll be similar to what we've done back in the summer and in the spring. We're able to use our professional center over at the high school, and we're able to listen to feedback and have correspondence with folks throughout the community, again, on questions, concerns, things that they've seen thus far in the school year in our virtual platform. And then, last but not least, we just received our annual certificate from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards notifying that the Mount Horeb Area School District is once again participating in the WASB, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, as another participating member. So shout out to our board members. That's the conclusion of my report.
Thanks, Scott. Does anyone else have any school news? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to item 3B, citizen comments. By now, you can tell me what the telephone number is, but those wishing to speak should please text their first and last names to 608-250-9166. Mr. DeYoung is holder of the magic phone tonight. That's 608-250-9166, and we'll wait. We'll wait for someone to dial in, to send us a text. We'll wait just another minute, the number is 608-250-9166. We will move on, there of course is another, or should be another, yes, there's another citizen comments section at item 8 later on in the agenda. So, we're on to number 4A, recommendations and employment status matters. The chair will undertake a motion to approve these transactions.
Motion to approve, Danny?
Danny has moved, and who's seconded?
Kimberly.
Kimberly has seconded, all right, very good. Danny's moved, and Kimberly has seconded a motion to approve personnel transactions. Is there any discussion?
Just a quick clarification, this is Leah, that includes the addendum, right?
Yes, it does. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and personnel transactions are approved. Item 5, consent agenda, are there any of these that anyone would like pulled out?
Motion to approve, Kimberly.
Kimberly has moved?
This is Jessica, second.
Jessica has seconded a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the consent agenda is approved. Item 6A, committee member reports. Jeff is out this evening, so we'll move to finance, and Diana. Go ahead, Diana.
Thank you, so our finance meeting last month was actually the annual meeting, so we don't have a regular finance committee meeting in the month of August. So, look forward to some really fun and interesting topics on the one for next month.
Thank you, thank you, Diana. Moving to wellness, Leah.
All right, so at our last meeting, we reviewed policy 447.1, which will be up again, which will be up for us to approve tonight for a first reading. And we also reviewed a draft potential anti-racism statement, but that will come to the board at a later date.
Thank you, Leah. Moving on to 6B, summer school report. Mr. McCormick, I saw his face just a minute ago.
Good evening, how are we doing tonight?
Great, how are you?
I'm cold, I'm not ready for this winter-ish thing that's happening right now.
You got it, man.
I have not been acclimated yet. So, I have a slide presentation, but I'm not quite sure where things stand with that. So, I can just give you a rundown of what I have in front of me instead of trying to share the screen. A couple of things that I would like to point out. First and foremost is, this wouldn't have been successful without the teachers that were part of the program. I cannot stress enough of how willingness, the willingness to work with just students on an individual basis was, it was so inspiring. We tried to manage teacher hours between 8:00 and 11:00 throughout most of the school, or the summer school day. And there were teachers that were working with kids well into the evening, so all the successes go to the individuals that were present doing math and reading for a handful of kids in each session. So, I was very impressed by that. So, just to recap a little bit of where we are, I'll take you back to where we, pre-COVID, and then how it went shifted into what we ended up doing for this summer, the impacts that were made, and then some areas of improvement that we've seen throughout the course of, actually, the two years that we've done this way, and then what we could be doing in the future. So, without further ado, so when we were expanding our horizon after a very successful first year, where we had, I think the number, I keep coming back to my mind, is 351 students taking part in that first-year program. We had approximately 24 classes, rather enrichment or written enrichment, and remedial, or some booster, skills boosters. And we were bringing that into, we were up to about 30 new, or 30 classes overall, and we brought in eight new classes for the 2020 year. We used the intermediate center for the first year, and we were moving classes into the middle school, and we even had a, one class that was going to go to the high school for ninth graders. That all changed, as you are well aware, in the middle of March. And so, the pivot went to the skills boosters classes of math and reading. As you, I would assume, understood the reasons why, with no face-to-face interactions. So, invitations went out for those students that were involved, or that would, we thought, through conversations with fellow teachers to, and families, what would be beneficial for those students to, what courses those students would be beneficial to take. Our classes were from June 22nd to July 3rd, and July 13th through the 24th, and they were encouraged to attend all four weeks. The first year, we had, we had the program face-to-face. We had high school mentors. Obviously, they could not partake in this, in this year's sessions for obvious reasons. So that's where we started. We had reading and math class, and then an intro to kindergarten. So, each class had a reading teacher, and then each, each class had a math teacher. And my lovely puppy would like to share his thoughts on that, but we're just going to hold those for later. Our numbers were obviously a little bit down because we didn't have as much creativity. We did end up with approximately 150 students. And of those 150 students, 77 families shared with us their thoughts of the course of how summer school went for them. And as you can see, out of the 77, 96% thought that their student benefited from this, from the program. 90.9% believed that they would come back, would enroll your students for next year. And we could talk about how that would change. Of that nine that did not, some, I believe, four stated that they can't, they did not think that the virtual learning was a good, a good program for their students to learn. That's down a little bit from the 96% that said that they would re-enroll for 2020, but that's obviously another one of those because of the virtual settings. As I stated before, when we were talking about like the reasons of success, the parents saw that too. Multiple comments were how wonderful the interactions were in the small group settings, and even on a one-to-one basis on occasions, was very beneficial for their students. So I have attached some of their quotes. But then, there were some that were obviously a little bit more constructive. And so, one of the ones that struck my eye was the virtual art program. Because we had to pivot so fast, we didn't really have an opportunity to ask teachers what they could be, what we could implement, and just the flurry of so many changes happening so quickly, we just stuck with the enrichment or the booster classes. But I can talk about what we can do next year regarding, depending, or you know, to help prepare us for those changes in program availabilities. We had 14 teachers, if I did my math right. We had 14 teachers, and of those seven responses that said 100% that they enjoyed their, their time during social studies, they enjoyed their time during summer school. A lot of the conversations that I have with those teachers said that being able to have that small group presence really, really helped them get through their curriculum throughout the course of the summer school. All right, so, areas of improvement. Of the 77 family responses, 65% obviously want the face-to-face model. 21% wanted the blended hybrid model. 9% wanted the online virtual. And then, the remaining percentage was that they will not be attending summer school. I would like to point out that this survey was given at the end of July. So a lot of new information has come to light, a lot of things that were, you know, has changed in that, in those six weeks. So, that number might get a little bit, might be a little flexible. In the, what areas do you feel the district can improve on for next year? Us, the variety of classes. And we had seen that a little bit in the first year as well. So that's not so much of a surprise. It's just another opportunity to think about what we can do depending on what model we want to do, or what models will be available to us summer of 2021. So, with that, with our next steps and our focuses, in 2020, for this coming up year, we looked at a couple of things of registration and transportation and a variety of classes, and then class placements. We took it, we took into consideration, some of the enrichment classes were next to some of our more quiet classes, so that those distractions we wanted to eliminate for this year. When we come back, possibly, you know, like for our focus for this coming year would be a continual increasing class opportunities for students, and then also seeing what's flexible for families. You know, depending on the statute, this, depending on what the county is, are we going to have a face-to-face hybrid or a virtual? And I think being able, being out in front of that a little bit, we can see what teachers could accommodate in their prospective classes for next year. One of the recommendations from the families was a virtual art program. And now, and now having some time to reflect on that, there are some other opportunities in what we could in the next summer school. And then, continue to, you know, figure out ways to bring back some of the high school mentors. I was really impressed by the mentoring of this, of this high school staff. We're at a high cost, so I'd like to figure out a way, no matter what program, what model we have, is to have them more in touch with our younger students. Okay, so that was a fast debriefing questions. Please fill in your share or reach out and contact me at a later time.
Thanks, Eric. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Eric?
Brad, this is Sarah Straka, may I say something?
Of course.
I just want to publicly thank Eric for taking the ball and running with it. He was put in a tricky spot with having face-to-face two years ago, and then we were switching gears, Mitch tried to go virtual, and he picked up the ball and ran with it. So, I'm deeply indebted to his work ethic and his connections with his colleagues to make this a really good experience for kids and for their families. So thank you, Eric, very much.
Thanks, Sarah. Any other questions or comments for Eric?
Eric, thank you so much for joining us this evening. I know you have a busy schedule as well. Taking some time to reflect back on the summer is extremely valuable for all of us. So, again, thank you on behalf of the group.
Thank you, Eric, and to all the teachers who quickly pivoted to implement summer school.
My pleasure, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thanks, we'll move on. Item 6C, COVID-19 update, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, good evening. Well, since the last board meeting that we had, kind of lots changed in the world of updates. And so, I'll be doing kind of a quick update, and then any questions that you have, feel free to let me know. As you probably have heard, on August 21st, Public Health Madison Dane County came out with order number nine that had some key components that are really important for us as we move forward. Basically, that order said that, Kate, we're open for in-person student instruction for grades kindergarten through second only. Even if we're open for in-person instruction, public and private schools must provide a virtual option for kids in grades K through 2. And so, that was kind of the biggest component of it. What they did was they gave us a metrics. And the metric is really important to kind of understand, and it was, it was in your board docs as well. I'm just going to kind of run through what that exactly means as well. So, what they do is they take a four-week, they take an average of two weeks. So for 14 days, they take a two-week average of cases per day. And then they take that number, and that number then indicates if school can go in or not. So we take that number, and then you have to keep that number or be below that number for four weeks. So for K2, the 14-day average had to be 54 or fewer cases per day, sustained for four weeks. So that was met on August 18th, that's why K2 is allowed to be open. For grades 3 through 5, the 14-day average has to be 39 or fewer cases per day, sustained for four weeks. We have not met that average, and in fact, we have not started the four-week countdown yet. So, last week, the number is updated at the end of the day every Thursday. And this past week, Thursday, September 3rd, the number was 45. So then, we would assume that we would have at least another four weeks before grades 3 through 5 would be allowed back in the building. And then for grades 6 through 12, the 14-day average has to be 19 cases or fewer. And so, that's kind of where we're at. So that matrix is really important for us as a district and how we're moving forward in decisions that are being made. As you've probably seen as well, this weekend was record-high numbers. And so I'm assuming again that we will not reach the 39 or fewer, which is very likely, so that's really, it keeps bumping that back for when grades 3 through 5 could come back in. They have given different, so as you saw, the 14, if the 14-day average goes above 54, which we'll find out on Thursday if that's the case, we don't yet know if that causes an emergent, an immediate closure of K2 within the buildings or not. We will wait for that, they're going to look at other data. So they've given kind of two ways on how to look at it in the meetings that we have with Public Health Madison Dane County. One, they've said if there was a breakout in a specific location, such as a nursing home, was their example, they would put that into context. They've also said that UW-Madison does not live on an island, and although they, the UW-Madison folks are back in, bringing a lot more kids, and they're 70% of the reason why our numbers are increasing. But the workers at the university have all of their staff that are coming back to the surrounding communities. Their students are at the grocery stores, at the restaurants all around Madison and in Madison, with mingling with other people from other communities. So, I'm not quite sure what Thursday will entail, and then what kind of guidance and feedback we'll get back from there. So, that's kind of the general update on order, emergency order number nine. And then, we got an update, an amendment order of emergency order number nine at the end of the day on September 1st, so in, and it went into effect the next day. And that order really focused on students with disabilities. And so, that order in itself kind of clearly came out and said that small students, regardless of the grade, if you have an IP, you're allowed back within the building to receive educational services for students who, the exact words are, who due to their unique needs may need to receive in-person instruction. So, that's very, not as clear as we would have liked, right? So there's been a lot of follow-ups and a lot of FAQs on what that exactly means. Today, all of the special ed directors, and including myself, and the DPI leadership, the special ed director, as well as one of the assistant directors, had a meeting. And they re-clarified, it says, when it can't happen virtually, the go-to is always virtual for the health and safety of students and staff. But when you can't do a service virtually, then you could bring somebody in to do it in person. It's permissible for districts not required, and this goes back to specially-designed instruction, which is the law of special education. We're providing those services. We're not providing every service. We're providing the special ed service that we can't do in, uh, in a virtual environment we would do in schools. So kids might come in for very short periods of time, um, to get one singular service. Um, and so, um, that was kind of where we were at, and that's kind of the work that you guys have already done. So you had already pre-approved that special ed plan. Um, that it was our phased-in model. We asked if that phased-in model was appropriate. They said absolutely. Um, and so we've kind of already laid the groundwork a few weeks ago, um, with the special education, um, team that we had worked on in doing that. And so K-two is still our plan, is, is still to start the kind of our beginning stages um, next week, Monday, to start bringing in a select few kids into the district. Um, and then for grades three through five, we just needed a little bit more time, so they'll start the week of the twenty-first um, in this, in this phase two, because early childhood four K, um, are already in person, um, right now. And then, um, and then we'll do our next phase in October, the beginning of October, so we can start bringing even more kids in to receive some services. So that's kind of how, where we're at, and those are the two orders that have been released since our last meeting, and, uh, that's how we're moving forward.
Ryan, I just want to make sure that we're clear. The last phase-in schedule that you just articulated was kids with IEPs, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I don't want there to be any misunderstanding about, about which kids we're talking about. Is there anybody else with any questions or comments for Brian?
This is Leah. I have a question, but Brian, I don't know if you'll actually know the answer. Um, so the information we got about the USDA waiting fees for lunches, are we going to do like we did before and start offering lunches free again to anybody or, you know?
Um, Scott, do you have more information on that?
I do, um, and I wonder if I could, um, look to Michelle Bank. I see Michelle is, is online with us. Um, Michelle, are you available to give a summary of what the food service program's been doing and what you plan on doing now that the federal government's providing meals to all kids?
Uh, yes. So we have been providing deliveries to all students since the beginning of the school year. Um, we did receive notice, I believe, last Sunday that all meals will be free. We, um, did not notify parents right away because we weren't, we were a little bit worried about the influx and that we were able to handle it with food and delivery. So the announcement is going out tomorrow that as of the start of school year, the meals are free. Um, and then we will be changing our delivery model a little bit to reflect that. So we apologize for the late communication, but we did wanna try and figure out how we were gonna manage that prior because I've heard of other school districts who did, um, announce it right away and were a little overwhelmed by the influx. We didn't expect that communication to come out. But we're happy, very happy.
Yeah, we're hoping that, you know, as, as Michelle alluded to, that it'll give us an opportunity to um, provide more meals to kids, and it won't be solely based on, um, pre-reduced or pay lunches like a traditional school year would look. Um, it's looking like it did last spring during the pandemic, as Michelle said, where all meals will be, will be free.
Great. Thanks, Michelle. Um, any other questions for Brian?
Hi Rob, this is Jessica. Um, I don't necessarily have a, I'm not sure who would best to, to answer, but before, before we, um, get any further in the agenda, I just, um, a little bit of an update on, um, in an earlier committee meeting, I heard about technology and how that kind of went the past week. Um, but I just wondered about if there had been any, um, supports that our teachers or principals that were standing out that, that, you know, areas that we could help or should be discussed. I don't know if we can talk about that now or not, Rob. But I guess I just kind of wanted to get a little recap about how the past first week went.
Yep, I think it's fair question. Uh, can you take that one or?
Yeah, I, I can speak a little bit to that from my perspective. Obviously, I'm in the business office, but, um, Mary, maybe Sarah Straka can add a little bit to what I share. Um, I know that our technology team has been working closely with our principals and with Dr. Salerno and Sarah Straka, um, on assisting families on connection issues. Um, trying to get our cellular hotspots to, um, folks that not only qualify but are in need for that service. Um, one of the things that, um, a group of people in the district has been doing is connecting with MHTC to see what options might be available to, um, try to help or assist families that are, are having some issues there. I don't know, Brian Johnson or Sarah Straka, if you have anything to add from a curricular point of view?
I, I think, you know, what I would say is, you know, just talking with staff, um, it is, we're continuing to learn. Um, it's, it's a different kind of a model, and it's a different, more face-to-face, and so we're learning the kinks of what works and what doesn't. Um, I think that there's been, um, some small frustrations or, or frustrations, they're, they're probably not small. Um, but for people getting kicked off, um, I've heard that within the district. Um, I've heard it within my own kids too, um, where, you know, we're getting kicked off the system and so kind of coming back on. Um, and I think that that's a a, a state and maybe country issue right now with so many people on the internet. Um, and so we're continuing to be accommodating and try to, try to alleviate some of those concerns. But I think it's about figuring out the system, the links, how it all works, um, and providing as much support as possible. Um, I know special ed teachers too are, are providing some of those direct, easy, clear, understanding directions to try to really help support kids, um, kind of during this time, so. That, that, that's what, what I know. Sarah has anything more?
I think logistics-wise, things are, are going well considering we're in live instruction and, and students are um, balancing the syn, the synchronous and the asynchronous pieces. Um, I think, just like Brian said, figuring out some of the technology hiccups that some staff have and some staff are having more, so, um, just trying to narrow it down if it's based on what, what current device they're using, a Chromebook versus a desktop, um, what building they're in. Um, so we are narrowing those things down. Last week, uh, we reached out to other school districts to see if they're seeing some of the same things. Um, but for those school districts that started when we started last week, there were a couple where they were using Zoom or Google that were, they were having some glitches that just trying to figure out when you have, like Brian said, just huge massive users all at once on one day starting something, it's, it's gonna push the limits of any system. So we're just still figuring that piece out and troubleshooting the things that we can troubleshoot right away and, um, then just collecting data information on some of these larger system issues with technology, but, um, luckily, staff, I think, are getting, um, each day in a more comfortable place for teaching online. Um, the next day is always better than the previous day just for that comfort level and, and balancing everything. So we're getting there. It's a process, um, but we're getting there.
Great. Thanks Sarah and Brian. Jessica, did that, uh, did that help?
Yeah, I just wanted to have a, you know, like I said, we had talked a little bit, bit about technology, and I just kind of wanted a bigger sense of, of how things were going and if there were any needs that were identified. So, thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you. All right, where are we? We were on COVID-19 updates. Are there any other questions of, of Brian, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to seven A. Uh, this is on first reading, so, uh, because Jeff's not here, we'll have to, we'll have to bring it back, but, uh, I, I think we can have a discussion if there are changes that, that folks would like, we can, we can note those. We'll just have to save it for the next meeting in terms of approval. Uh, this is to consider a motion to amend the physical force, the corporal punishment, um, policy four, four, seven point one. Uh, Brian, you're up again.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so this kind of came down from a new law that changed, actually. Um, it changed right before we went into lockdown, uh, or, you know, closed the schools. And so we didn't really have to look at it because we didn't have the kids in our building. And so now as we're starting to do that, it was a good time to bring it back. Basically, this is a pretty general policy that really just talks about the law. And so I added the new law that got passed that was in there. Um, and also just changed two things, which are the big changes of it, which is adding the very last sentence, which is a system for, we added documentation and for training. And so then, eh, as soon as this, um, policy gets approved, then we'll change the administrative regs, um, which really go into specific detail about what to do to comply with those areas. So those were, those were just the things, was adding the, the new law that was passed and then adding the word documentation and training.
Thanks Brian. Leah, uh, chairperson on the committee, do you have any additional thoughts?
No, they were pretty straightforward changes we kind of had to make due to the law change.
Great. Okay, well, we'll bring this one back, uh, we'll bring this one back next time. Are there any further questions or comments about, about these changes to this policy? All right, hearing none, we'll go to seven B, consider the planned purchase of high school video cameras. Mr. DeYoung.
All right, I'm gonna have a document here to share. So this is an item that came from the, uh, BGT committee back on, um, August twenty-fourth. Um, the, the topic has to do with our safety grant. You may recall a while back that we were fortunate to receive two safety grants from the Department of Justice, and, um, both grants gave us an opportunity to do some significant advancements to our, um, safety cameras, to our cameras in our buildings. And, um, to close out the camera portion of the safety grants, um, we went to quote for some additional camera work, again, to complete that project, um, primarily at the high school. And you'll see the three, um, companies that we shouted out to. Um, these are companies that you may recognize them, um, companies that we've had experiences with, we've had good experiences with. And so we asked them to quote, um, these cameras, and what you'll find is, wow, what a significant difference. Um, Boltronics is a company that we used, um, in the past for other safety grant purchases relating to the same camera project. Um, it seems fitting that we continue down that road with them, and you'll see by the, the quote results, um, they quoted just under thirty-three thousand dollars. Um, and so again, um, brought forward by the BGT committee to bring to the full board for consideration. If we're fortunate to have it approved tonight, um, our technology team will be able to work with our high school administration um, to complete that camera project and get the cameras in place where they need them.
Motion to approve.
Answer any questions? Thank you.
Motion to approve. This is Danny.
This is Leah, second.
Danny has moved, and Leah has seconded a motion to approve the planned purchase of high school video cams. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the planned purchase of high school video cameras is approved. Item eight A, citizen, citizen comments. Please, please text your first and last name to six oh eight two five zero nine one six six. Six oh eight two five zero nine one six six. One more time, six oh eight two five zero nine one six six. We'll wait just another minute. Great. There are no citizen comments. At eight A, we'll move to nine, future agenda items. Lots of information and advocacy reports, it looks like. Uh, if you have an agenda item, please, uh, let Steve or me know. Uh, item ten, the schedule of next meetings. Looks like our next regular board meeting is the twenty-first of September. Are there questions about the schedule of next meetings? Great. That brings us to item eleven.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Danny.
Second, this is Diana.
Danny has moved, and Diana has seconded a motion to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
All those will say no, all those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.